So I will call the November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four Town Council meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. What is it?
But we just stood by.
Through the line.
The United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any proclamations or presentations this evening, so we'll move on to public petitions, communications and public participation. Um, all lecturers in the town, all in having two minute limit. Do we have anyone in the room today who'd like to speak?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Do we have anyone in the room who'd like to speak?
Me.
Yep. If you could just give your name and address.
That's it.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Preisner. I'm a resident at one hundred Old Post Road, number one one five, the access housing at Parker Place. I'm here to speak about the fire and the resulting loss of power. That night, power went down somewhere after six. Uh, about six thirty, seven o'clock, I walked down to the common rooms and there were quite a few residents that were gathered there. All the lights in the hallway were off, though. There were no emergency lights on the ceiling. The exit signs were lit and some of the office lights were lit. And there were a few overhead lights in the common rooms that were lit. Slowly, they shot off one by one until there were no ceiling lights anywhere in the building. I contacted the fire department because I wanted um documentation. And the fireman did come out and walked around with me and saw that all the lights were out in the building. Um, and recommended that we call maintenance, which I did left a message with their answering machine or with their answering service. They did send a maintenance man out, got there around eight o'clock. And what happened was the generator never kicked in. Our power was out for over twelve hours. As you can see, I'm a user of supplemental oxygen. I have a floor concentrator at home. I also have a portable oxygen concentrator, uh, an Inogen. Between that and my backup battery for it and a tank of oxygen that I had in the apartment for emergency, I had sufficient oxygen so that my um oxygen saturation rate did not drop dangerously throughout the entire twelve hours. Power went back on at six thirty again in the morning. Um, since that time, I have been able to acquire a larger oxygen tank from my oxygen supplier so that I do have a twenty-four hour oxygen tank, whereas before I only had two, two-hour tanks. Um, I just wanted you aware of the fact that nobody from town came to check an elderly housing complex that was out of power. And the fireman that came, he did not go around and check with the other residents to see if everybody was safe. Right now, I'm the only one that's on continuous oxygen. There is one other person that's in the building that uses an Inogen whenever she feels short of breath. But to me, it's my lifeline. And a lot of people have relatives within town. I'm one, my daughter who lives on Evergreen. So if I needed to, I could go to her house and plug in. So that way I'm not in danger. But the fact that there was no contact from anybody from the town in an elderly housing complex out for twelve hours, and we didn't have bad weather that night. It was relatively mild. If it was a cold night like it was the last couple of nights, we would have been up the creek without a paddle. So I just wanted you aware of this safety issue and that there is a problem. And when we asked about the generator, the generator company never even came out that night, even though maintenance said they contacted them. They didn't show up until the following morning to start working on the generator. So somewhere there's a failure and it, I don't know who needs to address it, but I figured I'd come to you because you're the guys that leased that building to this access housing. So ultimately, you guys are responsible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next we'll go to Jody Coleman Marzialello online.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jody Coleman Marzialello, seventy-nine, Talon Green, Talon, Connecticut. Um, I just had a question kind of. I saw on the news tonight that they've removed the no burn order for the state of Connecticut. And I wanted to know if the town was going to update the website and if the fire department was going to remove that since we had the rain and it's supposed to rain again um on Thanksgiving and if they were going to follow what the state did by removing that no burn. I know a lot of people are trying to burn some sticks and leaves, not leaves, sticks from um the wind that we've had lately in like their small fire pits. And I was just wondering if they were going to allow that and people to grill also outside, use their grills now based on what the state just did.
Okay. Brian, is there a way to fix?
Uh, no, that's what I mean. I don't, I don't know. I mean, yes, for the next meeting, but now I don't want to take her around with it because we're getting voted off.
Okay. Are you, you're all set for now? Okay. As for Miss Marzialello, Special Brian, is it something we could?
I'll cover it in my town manager report.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from people in the room or online? All right, I think we can move to the next item up on our agenda. Uh, public hearing items, which we have none, which brings us to reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. So I'll go to Colleen, um, reports on ARPA Firehouse.
Um, yeah, I'll do that. I can do it, oh, that's fine. Um, so we met the Firehouse Subcommittee last week to some, you update the kitchen. It's finally been completed because we had to redo the cabinet due to ADA issues. They weren't properly in store toward the right time or put in. Then we voted on a final change order um to the contractor to split the cost, which was seventy-five hundred. And between us and them, it's gonna be thirty-seven hundred. And that will basically close out that project um as far as I know. And then we started discussing finally stations one forty and four forty. Part of the discussion was where to start first and we figured for fire chief, assistant fire chief, that was the best to start with. Four forty because there's not as much work that needs to be done. And the fire chief also recommended to the Subcommittee to go out and take a look at four forty to see exactly what they have requested to be um, you know, requested to be changed on. As far as that, that's put forward the other what that meeting was, but it's finally glad, finally heard that we're moving on to another station. Um, again, Megan did a fantastic job and the committee is doing good work there. As far as ARPA, that's on tonight. But that's gonna be on in. Sorry, you're really throwing me off. So there's an item on here for tonight. Um, so I won't discuss too much about ARPA because that was a quick, a very quick meeting. Um, and we're hoping to wrap up and close out the ARPA Subcommittee in January. Um, but for now, this is the final amount. Right, then is any one of those two?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, so we also have EHHD and PROG. Cause I've taken over quite recently. I don't even have the meeting schedules for those yet. We're trying to get them to be so. I don't know, Brian, is there any PROG or EHHD meetings you attended that are worth updating us on?
Nope.
All right. It's like seven A is done, like this. What's it? Oh, Rose Hall, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Um, thank you. The uh, the first thing I was hoping to bring to counsel on Rose Hall is um consideration to change the name of the task force from Rose Hall to Contaminated Wells, um, especially due to the um direction things are going in. Uh, it seems that maybe it's more appropriate to rename this task force to a contaminated wells task force. Otherwise, things are moving quite well with uh DPH, EHHD. Uh, everything's sort of on track to continue. I think we're expecting some communication to go out to um residents of the vineyards to give them a quick update. Uh, but other than that, um, you know, testing is going to happen in December on the Hilltop area neighborhood. And um, the result, the, one of the ways to address the vineyards is currently in progress. It's just as DEEP has told us, it's gonna take a little while for DEEP to finish its process.
So a couple things. I think that's a good idea to change the name of the task force. Brian, can we have that on the future agenda for discussion?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And um, second question was, do we have any updates on a open town meeting slash seminar? Talked about to educate residents on the topic and.
Yeah, we've asked EHHD to do that. Do you know if there's been any progress on that?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Um, again, it's, it's.
We've been focusing on.
There's an ongoing um litigation and attorney, attorney's involvement is very slow in regards to getting them to put that together. They would have to do that, um, what to say. They're just not, they're not there yet. You know, what I sent you, did you look at what I sent today?
I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Okay, there's, it's the, it's the communication and you're right, remember this Katie, they put out uh last year. And it was a lot of recommendations that Eastern Highlands uh called together from really around the country and what DPH had pulled together. Uh, and that's what we had sent out. And it's basically, you know, all the best practices around water softeners, um, and road salt and just, just everything. Uh, and so it was, it was sent to everyone in the vineyards. Um, and anyone that was on, you know, on a claim as well, any, any of the listed complaints.
That was actually sent to the residents.
What's that?
That it actually got sent to the residents?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
All right, I'll take a look later and ask more questions.
It's pretty decent. You look at this, like, there's a thing in Minnesota who have had similar issues um with best practices or on that as well. So there's, and DPH has a pretty thorough um documented theirs. And it's not like overbearing, like, you know, volumes of nonsense. It's pretty clear and concise.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I understand that sort of the council or the town is in a difficult position because of the ongoing litigation. We have sort of an obligation legally to the town to ensure we're doing it right. But um, it's, you know, as much communication as we possibly can know that try um that we can provide with residents, just updates, it's just sort of like status quo, just because um it's, I'm sure it's incredibly frustrating in general, these things that you take on, like sensitive that.
Yep.
Um, so it's, it's hard to strike the right balance.
Yes.
Um, I appreciate everything that you've done, but you know, whatever we can do to sort of try to get, get up into the business as we can and hopefully eventually it's something great.
Yeah, it's, it is quite a, a challenge and um, there are a lot of agencies involved, which makes things complicated. But I think that right now, um, most of the point is happening through EHHD, which is actually really good for the town because we have such a good relationship with Rob and EHHD. Um, but he also, you know, is running the health district for a region, so we don't get all his attention. Um, and you know, they have limited staff, limited resources as well. Um, but he has certainly been talking about uh regulations regarding um water softeners. Uh, those discussions are happening. It's just, it takes a long time.
Anything else on Rose Hall, other questions? I think we can go to reports of Town Council liaisons. Um, just go around the room. Jim, did any, needs me?
Yeah, uh, so PCC met. Um, the first thing we discussed was picking the fourth layer for most creative for the scarecrow hat tax. I won't steal their thunder in case it's not out there, so I won't disclose it, but it is definitely a good one. Um, they discussed the holiday tree lighting uh details that included um. One of the most important things they discussed was the food pantry is going to be putting out on social media means, um, specifically what they're looking for. And there's going to be donation bins outside of the PCC table for people to bring donations that night. Um, aside from that, they set dates, tentative dates for future events. The Memorial Day Parade is set for Sunday, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, next year's Harvest Festival is set for Saturday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Um, and assuming you want to do a combined uh tree lighting and parade next year, that's going to be set for Saturday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Colleen?
Sure, yeah, so mentioned with people with disabilities met last week, November twenty-first in person. That was the first time I've ever done in person. But that was great. We had a guest summer, Brian Bulley is his name. Um, no, it was great. Brian came in and talked about all the big things with town and town council support into our ADA. Um, talked about next Saturday or this Saturday's what Santa Claus being on the Hicks porch there and the ADA ramp. We talked about that a little bit. And we just, they started talking about their goals review for twenty twenty-five and approved their meeting for twenty twenty-five. But most of the meeting was Brian um discussing ADA in the community, which was pretty. So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Chris?
Yeah, planning in zoning commission that last week, um, the big thing they had was a public hearing um to amend uh section fourteen of the commercial industrial use to improve the self-storage facility within the Talon commercial zone. Um, so NIRAC, the, the owners of NIRAC, um, had approached them at a prior meeting um, looking to do like a climate-controlled storage facility within the building. So the exterior of the building wouldn't change much. So they held a public hearing. Um, the applicant NIRAC, they weren't there, but the planning zoning commission, my memory serves, we did approve that uh, that request to amend um zone regulations in the Talon commercial zone to allow for self-storage. And then um, they also approved their twenty-two-five, that's true.
Uh, historic district commission that last Wednesday, I was unable to attend. I had a conflict, but I did read the minutes. Uh, they had two COAs uh for various properties on the HTC um in the historic district. One uh was regarding a eyebrow roof, if I'm understanding that correctly, uh, to help with flooding. All of those were approved. They did um, some other business, they elected a new vice chair. Um, so it seemed like things went through pretty nicely.
Um, for me, nothing that I'm a liaison to met, so lots of quiet, quiet. With that, I think we go to uh new business, item eight-one, consideration of a resolution to authorize the town manager to allocate any remaining ARPA funding. So Brian, I don't know if you want to.
Sure, I do. Thank you, thank you so much, Chair. Um, so we had, we had uh one of our last, hopefully could be our last ARPA meeting before we um look to dissolve. And we are, we're in the process of uh talking about dissolving once uh ARPA has expired and uh and have it officially dissolved in January. Uh, that being said, there could be some um ongoing projects and purchases that would see it, it's, in theory, a small amount of money come in. I don't want to give back one penny. And um, whatever we can uh spend, I would like to spend. And it's going to be, you know, likely we can't, small enough where it's, it's, it's not significant, but I don't want to give it back, but also not enough to really convene in emergency meetings uh to get it through. So I'd like to, to have the recommendation of Lisa um authorize me to um move any of those, uh, those uh, if there are theory extra monies, move it towards capital or a general fund.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Colleen, you didn't add as ARPA chair?
No, there isn't. I think the last um three years have been great. Be spent the money wisely and pretty much spread it out everywhere in town. Um, family was on that many as well, should be great work. So I think overall it's good and it's nice to, would not want to waste any, any of that. Though, um, in January, I'll finish up. I think I already gave guys a draft of where everything was being spent. Okay, so nice thing once it all has been spent and then maybe that's what we discussed.
Yeah, we can add it as like a final report, just to show people what's on.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Otherwise, nope. I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to throw it on today.
Um, any other questions from councils? Well, Chris?
Just wanted to clarify, I think I saw this in one of them, I'm not figuring it out. There's carton no ARPA funds that are unallocated.
Correct.
Or?
They're all there.
Correct, but there, there exists the possibility, sure, something comes in less.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure the parking garage will not, um, but in case it did.
Yeah, no, I totally get it. I just wanted to make sure. Um, yeah, so thank you, Colleen, thank you to our ARPA Subcommittee for everything that they've done.
Yeah, and just one, I don't know if you mentioned it, Brian, but um, the question to Chris, Lisa pointed out last ARPA meeting, so we approved up to so much for the um parks facilities building too. What was it, Lisa, was it one?
One point two.
One point two, so automatically that would go over. So, yeah.
Got it. And it's under like whatever contract that has to be in order for it not, for us not to lose someone.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Um, will we get a report if this happens on any changes in allocations?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Just add, you know, the, the balance that we're voting on, you know, just kind of turn over to town staff to, to manage it. It's quite small, it's like sixty-six thousand, um, so. I don't even know what the original balance was, but it was.
What, five, one or something?
Yeah, so this is definitely the very last event and it just kind of makes sense. The administrative way to do this and prevents us from, I don't know, organized meetings around holidays and just allows everybody actively. Um, just no other comment. Um, all entertain the motion for the draft resolution. So is there a second? All right, any discussion? We're all in person, so do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's, that's unanimous, so resolution passes as written. All right, I'd go to item eight-two on the Eastern Highlands Health District. Brian?
I apologize.
Yeah.
That way ahead of myself. Okay, so um, the, the Eastern Highlands meetings, we have two representatives, the town of Talon. Typically, it's been the town manager uh and the chair. Uh, thank you, because I think um uh Katie was more, was better at attending than I was. Uh, but that has changed as of uh the last, say, year or so in that they've gotten so active with our uh, the water softener uh issue that we have here in town. Uh, I've asked them to reformat um the meeting, so they're more professionally engaged towards um health. And they've been fantastic uh about that. But at any rate, um, we would, you know, this is, this is a motion to have you uh attend the meetings now that uh Katie has stepped in.
Just typical precedent to have a chair and a town manager.
Yes, that's how it's been.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, just a point of order. Uh, in the last council, um, the chair was not on EHHD. I am very happy to have you take over as chair, but just as a, uh, to understand the history better. Yep, once someone was appointed on EHHD, they remained on EHHD until their term on council expired. Uh, I'm more than happy to turn this over to you, but just uh so as to not, to, to leave the door open for future precedent.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been handled um with the original appointee holding the vote until they were not a member of the council.
Yeah. Just, thanks for being, another question. Um, are you still technically on the commission or the district then?
Yep.
Okay, so this will be.
So I've resigned.
Okay.
And I'm more than happy to do that with this vote.
Okay.
East, Eastern Highlands requires the formality of actually having a council.
Okay.
But I, I'm happy to verbally resign from EHHD right now so that you can take over. Happy.
Right now?
Yep, right now, right now.
I'm a little scared.
No, they're very nice. They're so nice. It's a good group.
Okay, that's good. Okay, um, oh, I think entertain, all entertain motion for um the all entertain motion for the resolution as written.
I'll take that motion.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That looks unanimous, so that resolution passes. And just to point on that, I think I need the meeting schedule um for EHHD.
Once I submit the minutes for Friday, they're gonna get it too.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's on my sheet.
Okay. All right, that brings us to item eight-three. Um, we have all of our guests here uh in attendance, which is our discussion with our legislative delegation.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So uh with us, we have Representative Nuccio, Representative Ackert and Senator Gordon here just, just to give us some education funding updates. I thought I sent something out today, I can't remember if I did. Okay, pretty good links uh that, that's in there. Um, some stuff that, that was called together. Uh, so uh basically they're just here, there's, there's nothing formal that we want to discuss, just kind of updates and they're here for questions too. However, you'd like to start.
Yeah, um, I'll give our, our legislative leaders an opportunity to uh give us a summary and that way you can ask questions that are going to be answered. Thank you all, Colleen, and congratulations on your recent reelections.
Oh, thank you. Happy to be here. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Sure. So you guys didn't send us anything like formal that you wanted to talk about? So I'm not sure how you wanna, how you wanna go into this or talk about it. But um, right now with the upcoming session, it'll be a new budget year. Um, in that budget year, the assumption is, goes back to the twenty-seventeen educational format, which um has the leaning out of what they consider quote-unquote excess dollars for education from um a whole bunch of towns in the state. Last time I checked, Talon was still losing the most amount of money um projected. But in the four years since I've been there, um, we have all worked to have a hold harmless, so the towns did not lose that money. Um, we negotiated that, I negotiated that in the last budget also with uh the chairs. And I've already started conversations on either continuing a quote-unquote hold harmless for the next two years in the budget, but I'm actually going to be putting in legislation, which I haven't told these guys about yet, but I'm putting legislation um to, excuse me, to hold um all of the towns that have a loss as hold harmless. Um, from a budgetary perspective, I believe the governor's budget, which I don't know yet, but I believe they will be accounting for the reduction. Last time, the last budget, I think it was about thirteen million to hold the towns harmless. So we'll be looking to have that in the budget. So hopefully, we don't lose the three hundred and thirty-five was what it was projected, but I think it's down now. Um, but still hoping to get that in so we don't lose any ECS funding. There's also been a lot of movement with one hundred and nineteen commission, um, looking at the actual education formula, which I've been screaming about since twenty seventeen. Ken knows because I called him about it. Um, but the one nineteen council was actually looking at putting in a waiting formula for special ed um students, which I think would be very beneficial for the town of Talon. Um students, which I think would be very beneficial for the town of Talon um with our special ed uh population. But that has to all go through, be vetted, be priced, looked at, what's the change in the formula, um if they were to do that. And since the session starts, we really have no idea what the appetite is for any of the legislature on uh playing with the actual formula. So I think that's probably.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, thank you, Tammy, and and thank you all for the invitation. Truly appreciate it. Um I think starting now is important. Uh your goals and and what you want us to to work on is, you know, we work on behalf of you, so whether I have the little sliver of Talon, I serve all of Talon, so um. In terms of this type of legislation, so please keep an eye on it. Again, uh I can't reiterate more the strength that the one hundred and nineteen. Uh K Commission is out there working diligently on it and look, they're focused, they work very hard on um looking at where these hundred and nineteen. Um thousand disconnected youth, obviously, you know, you know, came from the COVID years and continues on now that. They were looking, how do you reconnect them? And they looked at at the fallacies of the education funding and state benefit and how we can better um bolster that. So besides just that, that study and others, I think that there's a push to look at how we better better support our communities and. Um and to the credit of of Tammy and Jeff and, you know, the the areas, the other legislators that have worked hard to make sure that we backfill that and did the governor's, you know, supportive. Making sure that we backfill um those towns that were looking to get lost and hold them harmless. You have to, why do we have to keep saying hold harmless? You know, we should be looking at how do we better fund uh our ECS grants rather than, oh, let's hold them harmless. Well, yeah. So you know that we're harming that. Let's not, let's not keep using that term. Um so and it really comes out just, you know, um looking at, you know, how we look at. You know, those that have means, uh and but those families that don't have means. And so we put that in one basket, right? For saying that, oh, you have some high earners here, but look at, look at the others that need the resources. I've been fighting. Uh since I've been in office, um which is a number of years, um to fully fund our special education dollars. We do a difficult job, but that starts at the federal level, to be quite honest with you, that, you know, we go back decades ago where. Um no child left behind was supposed to provide these funds. We are so woefully underfunded at the federal level. And so sometimes a call out to our federal delegations needs to happen, you know, to make sure that we get that, so um. We'll work to continue to support uh the needs of the town of Talon for sure, you know, look forward to doing with this team, so. But anything else that is is out there, you know, that's uh that is uh that that you may see that it needs um changes, you know, let us know. Uh where where that could be.
And I'll just follow up that I agree. I'm glad you're submitting a bill cuz we can tag you cuz I have a bill I'm submitting about. Uh hold harmless, which never made sense to me to say hold harmless. You're right, you know, we should just be getting beyond that and not have to keep dealing with holding harmless. And I'm hearing that from nearly all of my thirteen towns about it. Um but also the whole thing about what we do with special education, education funding. I've been in and out of multiple meetings. I have a couple coming up actually tomorrow at the Capitol, specifically about uh public education funding. Uh I'm looking forward that I'll be serving on appropriations committee again. And get to work with me again, Tammy, on that committee.
Thank you.
So. That's one of my committee uh finding out committees I'm gonna be serving on next session, so I'm looking forward to continuing on that committee. It's gonna be. I I think it's gonna be a big, big effort, especially since we have to wrestle a two-year budget, which should be quite interesting. About how that gets handled based upon whatever numbers you believe about where we stand with all these different accounts at the state level, but certainly education's uh one of the big ones and. It's been interesting talking with folks regardless of party. We're all hearing this from towns and cities that we represent, you know, as far as where we stand with ECS formula. Where we stand with special education funds, which should be quite the process to see what we do, but hopefully at least we can move beyond some of this. Type of budgeting that seems to happen, you know, session to session. If we can kind of get beyond that and have something longer term. I think there's gonna be more of an appetite for that, uh but the problem's gonna be where we wrangle all the money relative to, quite frankly, where we stand with all the uh numbers we get. About the quote unquote fiscal guardrails, but also as we know, when we're dealing with the uh the state budget for two years. There's everything else that gets put into the net, it's just not education and all of that back and forth. But I echo what Tammy and and Tim said, we work well as a delegation representing Talon. Happy to do so at any time. Um and if there's issues other than education, feel free. I already have. Like a hundred-page list of things from all my towns that I'm that I'm already have to work on, on new things to work on, so. And also, it's an open door invitation. As you know, as we go through the session, things happen all times of the day and night and things get thrown around and suddenly new things appear and. Things get changed, so reach out to us anytime. Uh I'm happy to advocate big and small uh on on a number of things, so looking forward to it. You know, as I tell people, even though the session hasn't yet started, it really has. You know, uh cuz all the work is starting now to really line things up and work on our bills and work on things that we can do, so always happy to hear.
So I would just add two other small things. One thing, um I've been pushing for a change in the formula. There's a fatal flaw in that formula. Um you know, Talon is. Very different town than my other towns. Wellington has a fourteen percent poverty rate and test scores in the forties. Um and they're set to lose sixty-four thousand dollars a year with this formula. It literally makes no sense how you have a town with fourteen percent poverty, which is the highest. Poverty in our area outside of Willimantic. It's higher poverty than Vernon. Um and test scores in the forties, but this ECS formula justifies taking sixty-four thousand dollars a year from them. It literally makes no sense. So there's a fatal flaw in the formula in the formula that was developed in twenty seventeen. And I've been on plenty of conversations with um SDE talking about that and showing the data to show that, you know. This is going to exponentially hurt a town who's already showing high growth in rates of poverty, high growth uh in rates of children not succeeding. And high growth in their board of ed budgets to account for the special ed kids because they don't have enough intervention, so. Um there's definitely conversations that are going on to look at that formula. But I think we're far enough away from twenty seventeen right now that it can't be a sacred cow anymore, so I'll continue to to push and work on that. Um I don't remember what the second thing was, so we'll just stick with that one.
Sure.
Eventually. Oh, that's what it was. Hasn't been announced, but I probably, I am still going to be the ranking member on appropriations, so I will definitely be involved with. All that stuff.
Yeah, the call.
Oh. I got told the day of an election, like, yes, so yeah, it has been no call to affirm.
Thank you. Um so I've got some questions, but I'll let us go around the room first, although last and um. I read the the item, you know, other issues as well. Um so I think it'd be good, maybe talk about education first, but if. Buddy has other questions or concerns that affect the town, I think you're all very busy. You don't wanna have a fever done it, so we've been talking about those things as well, so. That'll open it up to questions for our legislative leaders.
Um I, uh as liaison to the Historic District Commission, um the uh commission recently voted. To increase the fees for residents um when they need to apply for a COA. And um this is simply a reflection of the cost to the town and residents to um. Post notice for public hearings in the newspaper.
What?
In the newspaper.
Yes.
Yes?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yes, the 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 increase is uh is just about the cost to the town for requiring the public notice to be published in the newspaper. Um so we are asking our residents to pay more to cover a state mandate for um. Notifications and the Historic District Commission uh wanted me to pass along to you uh that we, they would like you to see if. Maybe this year there's room for movement on the posting requirements uh for public notices.
There's been quite a bit of pushback against those efforts.
You probably have.
Who's pushing back against that?
Oh.
What's that?
The newspaper.
Newspapers do.
Oh, yeah, I I I, oh yeah, I've got, I've got lovely um um comments when I put that in that I believe that we're beyond. Um this mandate and the newspapers just love to tear me apart on it and because that's the gravy. It is gravy money rather than the ability for most of us get our news electronically, to have you post your stuff right on your website. Uh every other um electronic, you know, means uh was was great, but the papers love to rip apart legislators. I can go back and you can look at the stories that were. You know, you know, the representative Ackert looking to harm your local newspaper. Um and because they, oh yeah, it was just. I am not, I'm not trying to harm the local newspaper. I'm just trying to reduce a mandate. On your citizens and your town for having to put in that um with those notifications and to look at the actual. Um it would be, the best thing to do is, you know, I'd be happy to submit it again. I have enough, I have enough bruises from it, from the passwords, it's okay, but um. Is actually look at the the reach, right? Let's look at what is, what is the reach of individuals? Who, how many people are on your e-newsletter or on your whatever you wanna do to have out there as opposed to those getting. A local newspaper, you know, um and get that, so uh be happy to institute that again. Uh uh Katie, be happy for your input on it and uh honestly, yeah, and. Be happy to, you know, to to take the lumps again, but it is really um time for us to move. Um you know, I. I get, I get the E E Harper current, you know, um and but most of my news comes from my e-news, e-newsletters from my towns that I that I get, and so. I think that's a better way to do it and to to reduce that cost, especially if you're raising it, you know, raising the cost to put it in, so I think.
They're raising the cost.
Oh, absolutely, yes, they're raising it.
And then we had in turn have to raise ours.
And is that just on the?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's what I mean. They're raising the cost to offset it because of, you know, uh cuz, you know, but so I I think it's.
And it's only one aspect that Katie's talking about, and I feel the weight of the HTC and they're right, but you know, he had to put up. A whole bunch of stuff, it's all over.
All of this is, sure.
So is this just on the residents, Katie, that are in the HTC?
This particular one, right? Because of the way our HTC um regulations are, and I think that there's some state guidelines or state um. Partial portions to historic districts, but it means that residents who live in our historic district, who whether they lived there for a long time or just moved in. Um there is this extra requirement to comply with HTC regulations and and everybody knows that, but now it's, you know, now they have to pay even more. Just to have their um their certificate of appropriateness considered by the or um by the committee.
Can you give me that, what are the numbers? What what is the?
We increased it to a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
But affects fees for everything that has to be done, but I think one twenty-five is the.
I thought it was seventy-five.
I thought it was seven, I think we doubled it. I think that's what it was. Yep.
Because of the requirement to.
Yeah, cuz there's, they have to, it has to be posted so many.
I think one twenty-five of it is the actual cost to post.
Okay, one twenty-five.
And then there was some town fee in there too, with minimal, but um.
When Hearst Media took over the journal, all the fees were.
I'm sorry.
Hearst took over and then he bought the bought the journal and and.
Oh, when he took over.
All the fees were.
Hearst has enough money.
Well, I faced this when I was chairman of planning zoning. It was for fifteen years that we had to post all of these things and we kept on. Having to deal with the the fees going up while we were cutting all the permit fees and getting rid of the name permit for a number of things, so the state didn't have to get its additional money. Uh for no reason at all. Uh but I can tell you that the most traction we ever got for public notices was when we would also do it. Through the website and then everybody would suddenly start sharing it on Facebook, which seemed to be the magic way of getting the word out, whatever. And most people wouldn't even look at the paper. Also, if you, if the paper fails to print it, despite you paying for it, then you get into some issues about can you actually. Go with the application and things like that. We've encountered that many times. So nowadays, everything is heavily to check. All the papers are really pushing their digital. As opposed to print. That's how I look at all the papers. I don't look at a printed paper. It's all right there on my iPad for all the ones that I look at every day, so. There's ways of trying to push that despite whatever pushback the papers will have, yeah, but still, that's just the way people are doing things nowadays, digital. If it saves the town money, all all the better.
Actually, I was gonna ask that, Brian. Do you know how much, it's been a while, but I've looked at it, but do you know what's in the town budget for um notifications like that?
No.
Please send me.
It's it's in each department.
Yep.
Um but we have seen those, like with this current year fiscal, year budget, those numbers all went up a little bit.
Yeah.
I, in my head, it feels like it's ten thousand.
I was gonna say.
It's five figures.
Yeah, it's definitely.
For notices across all, I I believe that's.
I think it was ten.
I think you're right, Ca- uh councillor Stargutter. I think it was close to ten thousand.
Um. Anybody else have questions?
You know, it's come up several times. I mean, I thought it's on the uh agenda, but it hasn't yet. So with the new legislation, it's been changed from the ordinance. Need to work, I don't know what you guys caught, that now it's two percent for board of educations and we can't have that anymore. So really, we have one, we should cancel it. I know you can't say anything, but I think we need to address that, that is. We can't have that anymore. They get two percent on, two percent on.
The state statute goes.
Yeah, it's so.
Right.
I just want, I think Brian, you know.
They can reserve.
They can reserve.
They can reserve their money without giving it back to the.
Right.
And we can't limit how they spend it anymore. It's mandatory two percent.
So I just wanna make sure that's clear in board of ed and figure to back that.
Yeah.
Their money.
That passed last session and it was in the big education bill.
Big education.
And it is basically, it's it says that they can save up to two percent of their budget.
Yeah.
In a reserve account to be used however they deem. So I believe that originally, the the current Talon policy, uh if it hasn't changed since I've been here, was that it was one percent and it had to be spent on transportation, special ed, or IT. Related things. That was what the prior councils put in place for allowable expenses for that one percent. And then that would get transferred to Lisa. They would, they would request it. It would go back out, et cetera, et cetera. So with the new statute. Um they can have, they can reserve up to two percent to spend however they want. There's no, the town council has no say over any of it.
Your board of ed has to say.
Yeah.
We're education side, and and it's if they have, it's if they have reserves, you know, they may, may, you may not have, you know, over budget. You may have, you know, whatever number it is, but that's what the.
Anything over the two percent would then go back to the town automatically.
Yes, I don't know if you just present that in the agenda, just to, I don't know, what was that, I don't know how that really works.
Yep, I'm I'm waiting to hear back from Rick on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Yeah, it's it's a circle back.
Yeah, especially with the budget, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That's uh, yeah. Yep.
Yes, I just two questions. Um Tammy, I, you mentioned that the ECS formula has a fatal flaw and I, so certainly, like, I I think. I understood you talked about like the the impact, the problematic impact of ECS formula. What, is there, I don't know if I caught the flaws or what do you, how how do we fix it? How do we, this is a council like Talon, Lincoln, you know, are able to, you know, if if we have a hard time, you know. Keeping high-quality schools without also just constantly targeting residents with increased property taxes, when we don't have these personal bases, help with that. Um I'm just curious like what your thoughts on how, how, yeah, how would we fix that?
So I've been looking at the formula and reviewing it. I think part of the flaw, part of the big flaw is especially in the amount of weighting that's given to the net grand list. Um if you look at, again, a town like Wellington, right, it's about thirty-two, thirty-three square miles. A lot of it is um farmland, a lot of it is um. Older properties and stuff like that. They actually have a few apartment complexes and such in the net grand value. This is gonna actually get exponentially worse with the um assessment, the the. Not the assessment, holy moly, I can't think right now, but the evaluation, the reevaluation. Um if you look at the amount that grand list is, it is heavily weighted. And it doesn't take into consideration the poverty level and it doesn't take into consideration how much of that. And it doesn't take into consideration the poverty level and it doesn't take into consideration how much of that land is farm or anything like that. Just looks at the basic assessed value. Uh, that's part of it. The good parts of it was that they did wait higher for English language learners and people with free and reduced lunch. But it does not give any kind of weight into special ed or um anything else that is like a special circumstance for school. It also does not take into consideration NBR, right? So NBR is legislation that's out there that says, you know, you can't technically reduce a Board of Ed budget. Um, without looking at, it's, it's like a five-year review of all the lost, um, all the lost enrollment. And then you take the average student cost for that five years, you multiply it by the, a number of kids that were lost. And that's the only thing that you can technically remove from a Board of Ed budget legally with NBR. Um, so in the case of losing three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, right? There's real, there's no way to quote unquote reduce a Board of Ed budget for that. So you're not taking that into consideration. So in this time, and you know, if you look at the Board of Ed since like twenty-ten, we've lost like eleven hundred students, give or take, total volume, right? Um, the budget has never gone down from there. It's always grown because, you know, salaries grow, fixed costs grow, et cetera, et cetera. So if you're not gonna take that into consideration, you're not adjusting it, right? To say that you're getting enough education funding from the state. I personally don't think the state of Connecticut has ever funded education well across the board. Um, it relies too heavily on property taxes, which creates all kinds of disparities in towns of haves and have-nots. And, you know, the level of, the level of education you can get in one zip code from another. So looking at the overall amount of what we think the state of Connecticut should be paying, the average cost. And then building on that, adding in for English language learners and everything else. Rather than docking people for a net grand value list that doesn't necessarily represent the income levels or anything else of the people in the town. So that's my opinion on like the fatal flaw of it. Um, the hundred and fourteen commission did bring up very. Well received, in my opinion, did bring up the fact that there is no accounting for special ed. Um, the amount of population of children that are in special needs. It doesn't account for that. And again, the state does a horrible job of funding even their portion of the excess cost grant. We saw that in the last, in the last budget. You know, we foregone eighty million dollars that should have gone to the towns. So not funding that then exacerbates the fact that you're now also gonna take money away from the ECS. You're overly penalizing towns based off of the net grand list. So to me, I wanna see that adjusted, net grand list, if it has to be considered, have a much smaller weight. Bring in a um an excess cost weight because if we're not gonna fund the excess cost, then I gotta find a way to get money to the towns to cover those. And look at the, again, the breakdown of not just the kids on free and reduced lunch or the kids that are English language learners. But look at overall growth in poverty, look at CPI or something else. So it's big. I know it's big, but I've been having conversations with people for over a year on what I think we would have to change. And um the commissioner's been very receptive to the fact that she recognizes that it is overly punitive. For um especially the small rural towns, a lot of which fall in the northeast corner, so.
Um, just one other question, not about education, um, but just cause I'll keep sort of banging the drum. Whatever you all can do with the Kennedy, well, if there's, if there's, I know it's a big problem in Talon, but I think that there is at least some issues in some other towns or whatever. I don't know if there's ever, if there's any opportunity for the towns to sort of work together to try to push something, but the more state leadership that we can get on this, the better. So whatever you think we should.
Yeah, um, and just to kind of, on that, I've been also meeting with deep in DPA, deep, deep in DPH regularly. And getting status updates from what's happening in the town and then pushing them to kind of come off the sidelines. And take a more active role in what's happening um in creating. I think I put legislation in my first year there to, to find, to find an environmentally friendly way to treat the roads. Um, it was not very well received, but um I will continue to push that. Because I agree with you, I, I think it was right there, or no, that was on my chair. I said, this is the next crumbling foundations. You know, this is definitely the next crumbling foundations for the state is the um, is all the salt. And I think part of that too could be, um, I'm waiting to hear from Rob on any kind of legislative ideas. On the um water softeners, on how we regulate that, when you put one in, when you don't put one in. Um, and how we have to manage that um, that discharge. Because putting it in a dry well in the ground made out of cement, but you can't put it in your septic tank because your septic tank is made of cement. And it corrodes your septic tank. I don't know whose bright idea it was to put it in cement in a dry well, right? So either we need an external dry well that gets empty or we need a better way to kind of handle that discharge. So thinking about it, working on it, trying like hell to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, from my perspective, I think especially with the water softeners, if there's anything that we can do, just because, and I have a water softener. And I think people need to know, like, do they need it? And, you know, how do you address problems with water if you don't have, if the water softener's not the right solution? So I think that's somewhere hopefully the page of the state could provide guidance. And I know the road's all pass ports and Brian has been working on that as well, so I really appreciate you pushing up there.
I would say, um, I've told the story when I was here, when I was here on council too. When I bought my house, it was thirty years ago, and it had a, a water softener. And it had the water softener that just like, the little tube just came out the house and it just dropped down into my yard, right? And it died and I did not have the money to replace it for well over a decade, right? Like, so we just had the, the hard brown water and all that. When I did get to the point where I was like, hey, let's look at this, had my water tested by three different people, um, three different companies. And two of them came back and said, you don't need a water softener. You don't have hard water. Now, this could be because, you know, I hadn't been using the water softener for years or whatever, but my water was not hard. But I had high content of um manganese and iron, something else. So well, only one of those companies came back with an option that was not a water softener. So I don't have a water softener in my home. I have this weird baffle system, like it's like this little hard filter that goes in. And I change it every six months and it comes out looking like a rusted pipe and, but I've never had better water ever in Talon than using this system. And it's not a water softener. I think Talon kind of just got into the habit of, oh, Talon has bad water. You need a water softener, you need a water softener, you need a water softener. But I don't think that we all need water softeners. I think we need filter, we need baffle systems, we need something to catch the elements. So you don't have the rust in your tubs and toilets and on your clothes and everything else. But I don't necessarily think it's a water softener. So I think if we look at what needs to happen for you to actually need a water softener. Um, and try to put some kind of regulation in on that, it, we might do well. I will say, last time I talked about this, but two years ago, putting in legislation, um, the real estate companies definitely didn't like it. They actually put in legislation and it passed and I've been trying to get it reversed since it went in. Um, and I think Katie, you might know about this, but it was the one where you actually can't share the test results, right? I lost my collective cookies over that because now you can't go and say, hey, I wanna buy your house. Can I go back and see if there's been any tests or anything? So I'm still trying to get that one reversed. Um, and again, when Rob has something, I definitely, let's sit down and talk about how we can figure out. How you are not doing more damage by just putting these in because Talon is supposedly a hard water place.
Well, the thing about the reporting, we had that fight this year, public health, and I thought we actually could get it out of committee. But unfortunately, it was part of a big monster bill. EPH bought us on that, interestingly. But it's one of the bills I'm submitting again, since I'll be serving on public health again, uh, on that as far as to do that, that fight. Because it doesn't make any sense not to be able to, for people to know, you know, uh, for that. And actually, if you, most people don't even know what type of comprehensive water testing you can get. Uh, when I built my house, I knew, cause I've been running fish tanks for years, so I know all the ins and outs of water testing and softening water and remineralizing it. And you're right, it's just not the calcium, magnesium. People forget there's iron and other metals that won't show on a water hardness test. Uh, and actually, people don't even realize the huge amounts of pockets in northeast Connecticut of actually just arsenic and radons. Yeah, and you actually, you're not required to have arsenic tested. I knew for a fact that my town had pockets of arsenic. So I knew my, where I was building was gonna test positive and did, and you know, we have the system, you know, for it. But that's another thing as far as, you know, what type of comprehensive tests should be done so people know. Because if you don't, you won't know about any of this stuff, which is very harmful or you'll buy your right, some equipment that will do nothing for you. But that gets into what type of comprehensive water testing you do, and they're actually not difficult tests. There's companies all over the place that do like a panel of a hundred or two hundred of this type of stuff and just tell you the answers.
My concern with the putting in a water softener when you don't need it is you create the need for it. Because the discharge, it makes your water harder. So then all of a sudden, water that's not hard tests as hard. Because you're dumping all the salt into it. So you're creating the mess. So I think that's why we really need to look at when, when you should do it and, and putting some kind of regulation so the towns know. Maybe you say you have to put, you have to pull permit to put a water softener in and do you meet these qualifications? If not, then you need to find some alternative source.
I just have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
What was the latest thing you're talking about, about not sharing water testing when someone's purchasing?
I forget the number.
I can look.
It was put in, let's forget which year it was put in.
It was put in two years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, Jamie Foster put it in. Um, cause the only, the only reason I'm asking is, I, I bought my house recently. And we had, you know, we had a realtor and we went through a process and we got our water tested. And thankfully, we did, um, because uh we had had a radon in the water in the house that we live in. So we had, yeah, the seller was nice enough to put in a mitigation system, but there was, there's weren't secret. We, we paid for those tests to be done, so.
Yeah, you paid for them, right? So the, the legislation basically says, if you're buying my house and I know that I have um bad water. I don't have to tell you. You can't, you can't say, like, you can't query and look up online to see if there's been a water test. That shows that I have high levels of iron or anything like that.
But it's like, it's a due diligence of the buyer to go ahead and do inspections.
But that's basic, like usually they do the basic water test, like what Jeff was saying, and that basic water test won't cover things like um the chloride. It's, that's an extended test that you actually have to pay more for. And if you don't know that it's an issue in that town, you're probably gonna do the basic water test, right? And the basic water test is gonna say, here are the levels of these ten different things. You need to pay and do the extensive test, which would include arsenic, which would include calcium, um, would include the, the sodium. It would include all these other things. You used to be able to just go online and, and you could look up an address. And Eastern Highland Health District would show.
Um, I didn't realize that was a thing.
Yeah, so.
Law change.
They changed it two years ago that you can't do that. And actually, Rob from Eastern Highland Health District talked to me about it because it also made it difficult for them to ship, to share results. Of the town, the houses in town that have issues, right? Because he can only give it to DPH. He can't give it to anybody else with this new legislation.
During public health, uh, public hearings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on this, and we were trying to push it through to make it, to change it back.
Mm-hmm.
But it fell, fell prey to other things, but it's a bill that I'm gonna be submitting again, cause it shouldn't be kept a secret.
When they do the homeowner's disclosures, when you're selling your house, it's, it goes on the homeowner's disclosure still. Correct. Um, I mean, there's, there's like a, I forget who puts it out, but there's um, you know, it's the end of it.
Form, it's very extensive disclosure form, and you are supposed to answer it to the, the knowledge that you have.
Sure. Especially like termites or anything else.
Anything, as opposed to disclose any issues that you're aware of in the home.
Right, right.
Jen, I can look for the bill number. Um, I, it's not coming up on my email, but um.
But it was a big enough change. And then actually, that wasn't, you know, Eastern Highlands hasn't been the only public health district that's complained about it. You asked all of them, other than a couple, uh, they all complained about it.
Not being able to list the results.
That shouldn't be kept a secret. So we were hopeful, we were building momentum, but it was a short session. There was an ambitious agenda on public health. This is a long session coming up. It is a bill I'm submitting, doesn't seem easy, word fix, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
It's can we get the momentum? So I've been reaching out to a number of different uh, uh, of the health districts to see what we can do to build up momentum.
Sure.
And can we get that through as a, a committee bill or part of a committee bill and see if we can make that change?
Did they, um, when they previously did, are you aware if they, you know, something was fixed? So say they had, I don't know how sensitive it was, but say they had bacteria in the water, but the bacteria was, um, they did something. Or, or say radon was in the system. And do they, would they list if things were rectified in any way? Or was it just you have an initial testing, here are your results, but we don't give the.
Yeah, I think it was just the testing in the past, yeah. Um, I know they partnered this up, like they linked it up with something that was done regarding crumbling foundations. And basically not being able to, like, you didn't have to share that, oh, my neighbor or like my neighborhood had issues. I don't remember the exact thing though, so don't quote me on that, but um, I think the old website, to answer your question, just said, there was a test, here's the results. Right? So you could then ask, was this resolved? Was this not resolved? And I remember somebody coming forward saying that they didn't know that the well um had tested contaminated. And it had gone just under the, the numbers. And then when they bought the house, like within two months of them buying the house. The numbers were skyrocketed again and they weren't ever told. So they bought a house, not, and if you're not from the area and you aren't familiar with what's going on, you wouldn't even think, right? So again, those are results that wouldn't come up on a basic test. So they bought a house that now they're in a contaminated well situation and, and there's nothing they can do about it.
And they're not minor health risks. When you talk about radon is far more common in the air than water, but people forget it actually does show up in, in water.
Sure.
Uh, it does dissolve into it. Uh, most people don't even think about radon even in the air, which is, you can go to the EPA and they have unbelievable. Maps, really, hyper accurate maps of where the radon is. But when you're talking about like, for example, arsenic, well, it's, big parts of New England have pockets of it, just naturally occurring. Uh, and that's a major health risk on kids and then when they grow up. But that's things people don't think of it, and somebody has tested and they're not been provided or a new buyer isn't provided that info. That's a major problem. So I, I didn't understand why, well, I understand why the law was changed. Doesn't make any public health sense. So like, but again, this, this is a, I'm submitting a bill on it and I'm hopeful that we can get it up for a hearing with my discussions with the chairs of public health.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. Um, so going back to education, um, what's the latest stuff on unfunded mandates? I think, Katie, you mentioned that you were working on.
There is that thing going on.
So there was a, uh, maybe.
Well, the education bill about that pass also is really looking to, you know, look at, you know, the unfunded mandates. What happens too often though is we ask a superintendent, uh, to, to let it sun. Um, what is costing you money? What, what, what can we help with you? And rarely do we get. Here's one, two, three things that you can do right now to help with the cost to, to reduce it. And we just don't get that feedback. We've asked CADE, we've asked CAS, we've asked all the, you know, the, you know, the education.
Yes, too.
You know, where, where can we, where, what is costing you money? You know, where, where, if you, there's some areas that you can pinpoint. Um, that, you know, that you can, that maybe we can, you know, change and submit a bill on it. That would, would definitely help. And that's, I think, really the key areas. I know that too often we put in curriculum changes, curriculum mandates for, for, for good causes. But then they go, where do we fit this into our deck, you know? Where, where do we, you know, change, you know, um, uh, you know, to obviously the, you know, the. You know, oversight of our teachers and, and the, and the, and the changes that we made in terms of, you know, um. Rating our teachers per cent, you know? So we would love to get that, but there is, there is a, uh, the bill that we passed is really focused on where we find some, you know, some mandates. But also someone says, well, actually, in that same bill that you reduced mandates, we, we. We added more mandates. It's like, so we got a bill on mandate relief, but we added more mandates, so.
That's the problem with those big massive bills.
And it really is.
Everything gets crammed into it.
You, you vote for, you know, mandate relief and then you said, but no, so we actually added. And then we added, you know, the, you know, people were upset in some towns, uh, that I serve about allowing the Board of Ed to keep money, but like. So, uh, looking forward to any input that would be great, you know, I, I know that, yeah, I think the, the groups that. CAS and CADE will, you know, submit things again unless they were, we'll see what actually.
But, but that committee is supposed to have a report. Um, I wanna say, I think maybe January, they're supposed to have an initial report. Picking like some of the top mandating. Picking like some of the top mandates or looking, at least looking through the three hundred and eighty-four to find out which ones of them. Are so old, they're no longer relevant and how we can remove them, so we're waiting to hear back from that committee that was put together to do a mandate review. That was in the bill, like to do the mandate review, um, so when we get that back. I'm plan on, you know, we would send that out to everybody to say. Does this help or not, but.
Should be an interesting report to see exactly what they said.
Yeah.
She, David got a point.
So there comes these task force take forever.
Yeah, no, and that, even if it's starting to be thorough, at some point that can become a problem in and of itself, um. Yeah, no, I mean, I know preaching to the choir here, you talked about this a few times, but that's definitely a huge issue, you know, maybe. There's an initiative that the bill sponsor would find useful in their own district, but when it gets applied to. The entire state, you know, we've got a ton of districts that are paying money for something that they really don't need, and that obviously comes back and. Hurts the town, um.
Yeah, well, that's why sometimes people ask me, why did I vote against a specific bill, and I'm like, because I stood up and talked about the unfunded mandate.
Yeah, absolutely.
The state wants to mandate, the state should pay for it.
Absolutely. So, hopefully that comes out in January, if it doesn't, I think you're good to. Celebrate it, because it's the problem we live with right now, um, and, you know, keep fighting that fight. Um, I wanna echo what councillor Rand, councillor Butler were talking about for water software. Um, regulations or guidelines or whatever would be appropriate. Um, you know, as we explore this issue contaminated with wells more and more, we've realized that this is a, a major factor. Um, for, for multiple to the property, so I think that's really important and, um, of course that's. You know, when we start on about state level and it's a local issue, it can be. Slow at times, so, so any, any pushing that could be done from our legislative delegation would be really helpful. Um, the other question I had was specifically with Department of Public Safety, I know. Um, my own personal experience and I think also our experience in the town. Um, sometimes we have trouble, um, working with, with the, uh, Department of Public Safety and getting, getting prompt responses with them and. Um, getting cooperation with them, I know our town manager has been working to try to, uh, get some, someone find data and statistics. Um, this isn't really a specific question, but I think it would be a group of our legislative leaders to look into. What can be done to maybe improve. Regulations with our Department of Public Safety and responsiveness, I hope would be very helpful. Um, and then on top of that, I think, um, you know, there, there's. Uh, some, some good reforms that could be done, like the police accountability bill and some of the, um, yeah, laws we have. Um, which are, are leading to, remember, car break-ins and car thefts that I know are, are. Delegation is, is aware of, but still very important issues to Talon and, um, I think that that would be a good thing to focus on.
And that's one of the things I've continued to focus on, I've served on public safety, I'm not gonna be on that committee in the next session. Uh, but, uh, that is an ongoing issue that has a whole bunch of various aspects to it. So it's been, uh, I know vast majority of my towns rely upon. State police barracks, that's their police.
Yeah.
They don't even have a resident trooper. Uh, nothing against the state police at all, but there's overall what the state does. Funding for public safety, other things like that, we can pass whatever laws we want about. You know, the speeding problems that are all over the place, the school bus passing, that's, we just gotta report on, which is not a surprise.
Yeah.
But it comes down to what are the resources the states do and partnering with the municipalities.
Yeah.
You know, very, very much so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the state agency gets tired of hearing from people, so every day I hear from one of my towns about something. So sometimes it's the small pets. Uh, like Union that, uh, keeps on letting me know about issues with, uh, policing of, uh, Bigelow Hollow.
Oh, I get those too.
Yeah, I get them, well, I know Dave eaten the first election well, and I go through there almost every day. Why everybody parks on both sides of that road, and then you can't pass on anything through that, but. Those are ongoing issues, and, and, and be honest with you, some of it also gets into where, where is the state's priorities and. Providing resources, funding, things like that, and it's just not, you know, talking about law enforcement, we'll talk about, you know, fire, emergency. You know, medical services, so it's a whole host of things, but.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillors? Yeah.
Uh, I wanted to circle back on contaminated wells, thank you for bringing that up. Um, and just kind of flag for you guys that, um. The contaminated well issue is within DPH, um, primarily, I think when we start to talk about. Water softener systems and water treatment systems, that that is within DPH, um, I think there might be room for DPH. Uh, that's, that's what Rob told us, that there, there might be room for DPH to work on oversight of those without legislation needed.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, um, you know, then it's a issue of. Um, prioritizing for the agency and of course, funding the agency on, on those issues, but just to flag for you that. Um. What we are finding on roads, what we're hearing on, on the task force, and the reason I'm asking for it to be considered to be renamed is that. Um, the roads off itself, it doesn't seem to have as big of a, um, contribution. As maybe we originally thought, um, and we have had extensive conversations about changing. The methodology in which we treat the roads, um, but at, at this point, there's no. Uh, any changes require a considerable cost, right, to change out our, um. Our trucks to do some brine treatment is a considerable cost, um, I also, I think. There's a marketing aspect that needs to go along with that, because we are the. It seems like maybe one way to address this from the machines themselves is to put salt down on the roads. And that, that like feels really weird, like counterintuitive to what you wanna do, um, but from what we're hearing from deep, there may be some, um. Some instances where, uh, brine treatments could reduce the amount of total product that's put down on the streets. However, it's gonna cost a lot of money to make that happen. Uh, and, and maybe not as much as bringing public water to every resident in town, but still, it is a considerable cost. Um, to, to towns, like that's a direct cost to towns to change out our, uh, equipment on that. But the issue of providing our residents with more information. And even more requirements regarding how they're treating their water, I think is. Where I would say, I would recommend your focus to be. Uh, I think that one of the things we worry about is, one, property. Discharging a lot of, um, ion exchange. Treatment into a dry well or even no well, uh, just kinda spitting it out onto a property. And it can, it can actually impact the water supply for their neighbors too, so it's not just about isolated properties, it is. What we're worried about is it, the impact, the bubble impact on, on a neighborhood or multiple homes. Um, from a town point of view, that there's some difficulty navigating that. Right? It's really difficult to go and be like, hey, you, you could be contaminating. You know, your neighbors, that's, that's a really hard thing to do as a town, right? Because. Our job is to provide support for everybody, not just one property, not just the neighbors, you know, there, there's a lot going on there. But if we could have some, um, regulations, as you said, regarding. How we are addressing our water that we're drinking every day. Uh, right now, it's sort of like the Wild West, uh, there's not a lot out there, it's gonna be really hard to retroactive.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Like.
Grandfather, you're gonna be troubled with grandfather.
But that, you, when you grandfather properties, you are in the same situation you're in right now.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
So thi- this is a, I mean.
Well, I think Katie, they did, I think that's part of the problem, cause when they changed the regulations to say, like at my house, you can't have the hose that just sticks out near your house. And like goes into the ground.
Yeah.
You had to have a dry well. They allowed people like me.
Yeah.
To be grandfathered.
Exactly.
So if I did put in the water softener, again, it's just literally every discharge was just going out into my yard, so that's part of the problem is. You would not be able to grandfather anybody.
Right, and that becomes a problem, right?
Cause it's an expense for everybody.
It's an expense for, it could potentially be an expense for everyone, and, and I've heard your story multiple times before where. Um, there might be some financial considerations in a home that, you know, it might be, it might be a difficult thing to do, so. The navigation of this is. In my opinion, maybe just as tricky as crumbling foundations in a very different way.
Yep.
Right? Um, but it, there, I think it's primarily a public health issue at this point. As opposed to maybe a contamination issue, um, and so that. When, when you bring multiple state agencies together, as you know, sometimes there's challenges navigating through multiple state agencies together. Um, but I, I think the town has worked really hard to establish a really good working relationship with both deep and DPH. A lot of that's being fostered by Rob at EHHD, um, and. So I, I definitely commend efforts to involve EHHD, this is in a very integral resource. For our town, um, to have access to, and I think he might have some interesting input, but. I think the regulation is more on the health side at this point than it is on the environment side, unfortunately, right? Like, it, that actually makes it a little bit trickier.
Yeah.
Um, if it was an environmental, if it's solely in the environmental space, like there's so much precedence for how that gets dealt with, there's. Very clear steps that you go through, it takes a long time, but there's very clear steps. We're not in that space too much anymore, now we're more in the public health space.
So I'm wondering, with DPH, right, in the water softener legislation, if I were to say, you know, Brian. Is there a way for you to get us a number of what it would cost for the town to convert trucks? Not all, cause right, it wouldn't be all, how many trucks would you have to convert to Brian?
It would be all.
No, no, pardon me, it was, the only, they were, deep only talked about doing the neighborhood step for having the problems.
Okay.
And that we wouldn't need to convert all our trucks, um, to Brian. In theory, what you're saying, yes, we could convert all the trucks into all the roads that need treatment. Katie might have heard me push back on this and say, why are you, why, why are you even suggesting this when we have zero data to indicate road saws? It's always causing any of our problems anywhere in town.
Well, it is better for everybody around if we put less, so.
Sure, and we are doing everything that Yukon recommends us to do and deep recommends us to do with, with responsibly, more conservatively than. Almost any town in the state, I would say, or what we put down on the roads. Um, that being said, it's, it's also where the, we're gonna buy the brine, that's expensive. We wanted to buy it from the state, we talked about it, you know, can the state sell us Brian, they could. Um, and now it's, you know, where, where are we gonna get the Brian, and it becomes a regional issue, again, we didn't tell them. Show me where Brian's gonna help. You know, when I got a resident putting forty pounds of salt in their backyard, month. Every month. For this decade. The next decade and the previous decade, in that one spot, thirty feet from their well. And you want me to change over my brine, I'm happy to do whatever you want. Uh, but I have a hard time discussing that, yeah, I can get you priced, um, to do that.
I'd be interested to see, like, what it would cost, cause I know we talked about that before, this is a cost to the town if we had to switch over the trucks again, right? Cause we switched them over from sand and salt.
To calibrate the salt and calibrated.
And exactly, totally calibrated it, went through the green scope, all that other stuff, but. If we had a certain number of trucks that had to be switched to a brine treatment. Um, A, is that more environmentally better across the board, can Talon be like the kind of test case for that? If I can get a number for something.
There's some other towns in the state that are doing it with some success, brine is only a pre-treatment.
Exactly, but it reduces the amount that you have. Right. But it's a reduction, right? Or it's a reduction in what they're putting on the roads.
Also debateable with deep seems to think so, I do not put a lot of credence into that.
But what we're seeing at this point is that whether it, the road treatment is a contributing factor or not. That's, uh, something we're debating, um, it's very clear from our testing. That it is nowhere near the primary factor.
But do you, you guys have that, like, I, I have the old report, I haven't seen, like, the new one that shows anything.
Do you have the listing of the area that, I'm seeing question. Vineyards, right, how many people are dumping salt from their softeners into the yard?
Yes, we recently did a survey.
Yeah.
Of, uh, a voluntary survey of homes in the vineyards.
Yeah.
To get information on their water softener system, um, the use of it, like where, where is it going? And also testing the, uh, water pretreated and post-treated. That's been done in this calendar year.
Yeah.
Can I, can, are we, we got that?
We can give you everything you want.
I'd like to see that. Uh, it's, it's a, cause it, part of that, if they're looking at, and I think DPH can regulate wells without legislative. Uh, but sometimes they want.
Yeah.
It's statutorily, because they don't do it, well, not, oh, I'm not saying. Sometimes.
There's no option to that.
Sometimes, yeah, yeah, they just don't, some people just don't. Um, but it'd be great to get that, because, because, you know, a lot of times, things like that, anytime you're doing code stuff, the, um. The codes of standards boards do not want legislation to be put in, in the tie years, cause they work on it. But they're working on new codes now, so, but that's gonna come by, I think. Late, late twenty twenty-five, so if there is something that would be, but the DPH could say, hey, we're gonna ra- we're gonna regulate wells. And you need to show, um, that you need to have. Um, a water softener by, by proof before a water softening company. Banner might not like the legislation like that, it says you have to prove that you need this. You know, um, before you could put a system in, or you need to use a system that is, you know, done in a different manner, so. Um, that would be interesting to see that, yeah, it could, um, and, cause. That would be, that would be a state, um, that would be state requirement if it does that one.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any final questions for our legislators?
I'll just mention one quick thing, you have to keep on your radar. The legislative session is likely to be very busy dealing with, um, housing. I'm gonna be the ranking center on planning and development, expecting that committee to be extremely active on that issue. Which gets into a lot of issues about zoning in town. So just be aware of that, this is, that's likely gonna be very active. Uh, this session, there's, um, at least one report that may come out during the session. Uh, and the second one might as well, that might move, try to move some things along, so just be aware of that, and some of it also gets into. Unfunded mandates as well, so be aware of that, that's likely gonna be an issue, it's already being listed as an issue. A number of committees are already saying, uh, that they're gonna be taking up aspects of it. Some committees that you may even wonder, what, you know, do they usually do it, but there's so many moving parts to it, that there's gonna be a number of. Committees. Dealing with it.
Yeah.
But housing and planning development will be the major two.
Yeah.
So just be aware of that, cause that's gonna really be at a municipal impact.
Yeah, no, thank you, I, no, that's been, um, I think it's been brought up in this past, it was maybe. Well, thank you all for coming.
I think it's been the invitation, I mean, I, 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 uh, said to my, uh, we are, I had a vet commentary first, and I said. Uh, to, um, town manager, uh, Jim Drum, oh, by the way, I got it, we got invited to meet with the town council, hint. And I, they, they, so they, they'll complain that we're not engaged, but they'll, they'll engage us. So we appreciate that and please, uh, continue to do that.
And you're one of the towns that always, always looks so engaged, so happy.
Yeah, and I, and I mean that, and it's been, it's, it's excellent.
Anytime.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, that completes item eight three, so we can now move on to item eight four, appointments to vacancies.
Yeah.
Um, municipal boards and commissions, um, I believe there aren't any actual appointments, but we do have an update on a six month review of. Historic district commission members, so Brian?
Yes, based on some of the, uh, changes that we had at the historic district commission six months ago, um, one of the, some of the stipulations were. Uh, that after, uh, uh, Ms. Marziale stepped down. Uh, that from the chair position to be, stay on as a regular member, she'd be a probation, probationary member, and part of that was to meet twice. Um, with our, our building inspector, um, and the reports of those are attached, uh, the stipulations are attached as well. Uh, she has successfully completed, uh, probation and will remain. Uh, she has successfully completed uh, probation and will remain on um, this historic district commission. Uh, the historic district commission um, is running so well. Uh, now we're very thankful uh, for the new members and the chair that has stepped up. Um, so that, that is all.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to have this cited off on the agenda, so we had some, some closure on that point. Um, but hold up to any counselors and questions or comments on that.
Oh, sure. Um. So the six-month review is more or less. One of the things that we had negotiated for, we were supposed to be discussing, kind of going through a checklist of what she did, what she didn't do. Um, so when reviewing the stipulations, um, did we make sure that she went through the SHPO training that was?
Jim did, yes.
Jim did, okay. Um, I think the only other thing is, um. Maybe discussing um. Whether or not there have been any complaints. Uh, I know that town council had received a complaint about, um. Miss Coleman Marziale, uh, posting a picture on social media of a resident's uh, daughter. It was a resident who she presumably has some conflict with. Um, and it was in regards to the sidewalks. Um, and, and I don't think I saw, but I think maybe Councilman Ren had seen a, a copy of the picture.
I don't know, I did.
You did, okay.
Yes, um, and, and while certainly, um, there were those that considered it um, in bad taste, it, it was not, um. Agreed, we discussed it with council, um, and our town attorney, and not enough to remove. Um, from, not enough to, to, to violate the terms of the signature from the, the kind of, the district commission.
Respectfully, it's not up to the town attorney whether or not Miss Coleman Marziale, which means uh, HGC, it's up to the town council to, to make a determination.
He, that was his opinion, but yes, thank you.
Um, so. I think we'd be. I think this should have been a discussion rather than a, um, a report as to whether or not she should be. Coming back or staying on the HGC, um, not giving an opinion one way or another. It sounds like for the most part, she's done the things that she stipulated. To do in a six-month period, but I think, um, in general, the proper procedure for this would be for a discussion amongst. Town counselors. I think that's what we negotiated for.
Anyone else have any comments?
I'll just, uh, uh, sort of just echo Councilor Butler to the extent that, um. I'd also wanted this to be brought up, uh, you know, as a discussion, just given, um, that the council is the one that held the proceedings. Um, and we're the ones that are ultimately responsible for, um. What was the boards and commissions, um, but I appreciate all the work that the town has done, um, and that you and, um. Jim have done on it. Jim, Jim, yeah. Uh, so, um, I appreciate that, and I believe you've also spoken to some resident to. Sort of address some concerns.
Yeah, I agree, um, that, that I, uh, thought this would be a discussion. I think. That's within our uh, jobs and duties is, you know, about appointing different members, and this was a. Difficult situation, um, to put it mildly. That I think a full discussion on this is what I was expecting.
Ask a clarifying question on that, um, because. Were you thinking of like a full hearing like we had initially or? Back in, back in May, uh, to remove counselors? Is that kind of what you envisioned, or was it more of a? But I'm just trying to understand like what, what exactly you mean by a discussion?
It's okay, defer to Councilor Butler.
Sure.
Um, I think what was discussed is that the council would. At the end of the six-month period, have a discussion, kind of go through the stipulations. I think originally it wasn't, um. As it appears in the packet, it was more of a handwritten, not a legal pad. Um, and I believe there was a bit more information there. Um, but the generally, why, when it came down to negotiating with, um, Miss Coleman Marziale's. Coleman Marziale's attorney is that we would review this at the six-month period, and then at that point, the town council would make a determination whether or not. To continue her on the HGC based on the discussion that we had.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, um. Sparkling to kind of understand like, uh. What differs from what we're doing now? I, I, I don't mean that in any disrespect, I'm just saying because we have our. Item and we're reviewing it, like, is you, were you thinking we would vote on this at the end of it? Like, is that the distinction here, or?
I think. This just, it comes off as more of a report that, that she's, you know, she gets the green light, she gets to stay on. Versus a full-on discussion. Now, if that's what we're doing, and I'm saying, you know. That's fine, but my, my understanding for when we made this agreement was that the town council's whole would discuss. Um, the things that we stipulated to, and, you know, kind of go down and, and make sure that she checks off the boxes. And that we then would make a decision whether to keep her, um. On the HGC, uh, because in general, uh. A, we're supposed to have the discussion at the six-month point, and B, um. There were a lot of other things we could take into consideration when making the decision. And, and again, I'm not saying one way or another, should we keep her on or keep, or take her off, but. That was what we discussed, uh, when we had, had the hearing, that we would have more of a discussion and then decide from there.
Okay, now I, now I understand. The concern, um. Yo, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, would you have something to say, Chris?
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so, yeah, I, I, I agree with, I just told Councilor Butler, I do just wanna make sure that, um. I think the town manager, because I did reach out to him and, and about, sort of, we had gotten a complaint as a council, and I would. It would just fall out to me, um, and the town manager did, uh, at least, uh, speak with that resident, so, um. I just wanna make sure that that's on the record, but I, you know, I appreciate it.
We would have to re-initiate removal proceedings, right?
I'm sorry.
We would have to re-initiate another hearing, I believe.
I don't believe we do. Um.
Re-initiate removal proceedings should her conduct be deemed unsatisfactory.
If we deem that her conduct isn't satisfied, yeah. But as far as if we decide that she's. Good to go, we don't need to do another hearing. So I think that's why I expected more of a discussion to kind of see where we take it. At this point, we're all. Agreeing that she should remain the HGC, then that kind of ends there. Otherwise, if people are feeling contrary to that. It, it appears that that's the procedure we'd have to follow. That we'd have to re-initiate removal proceedings. I think that's what it says, and I don't know if that. Means a full hearing, but.
Right, and so there's a gray area there.
Yes.
We don't know how that would end up. There's a cost, there's a lot at play, and now, you know, we, we can look down the road and see attrition. Uh, with the historic district commission, we've made some great progress. It's moving well, is it's, you know, it's kind of like, is it worth it?
Sure, I think in general, my position is that it should just be at least a discussion of those things versus just.
We're.
Here's a report.
And we're discussing.
Would the, and council be opposed to going through those items tonight? I mean, just like Councilor Butler and Councilor Stargardt, we have a list in the packet, we have. Mr. Paquelin's, um, letter, you know, we could, we could discuss that be amenable to review that.
Are you laughing?
Yeah, yes, yeah, sorry.
Am I okay with reviewing those things now?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Yeah, I just, I feel like it should be a discussion versus just a.
Yeah.
Here's what's out there, which I think we're, we're already halfway into this discussion at this point.
Yeah, so, yeah, my, my. Fine, taking that turn and getting, you know, my, my intent wasn't to. To shut people down by having that.
I, I didn't think it was.
Yeah.
So we discussed the discussion.
Yes.
Um. I, I mean, I, I kind of gave my position, so I'm.
Okay, um, although counselor, you check next, because you look like you're about to say something.
Yeah, I thought I was done, and you were so calm, so I apologize. But then, you know, yeah, so, I, you know, I get what everybody's saying. Is there something, I guess the question is. People not ready to accept the recommendations from James Paquin with his follow-up and everything, and he's sad. I understand why I was discussing, like you just said, we're discussing it now. So I feel like if. She's met what was asked of her. I'm not quite sure why we would want to delay, um. Knowledge and our provenness, especially if she's done everything that was requested of her. So I guess I'm a little confused on it too. So I mean, if it's something that council's not ready for, it, can you? Put this off to the next meeting, maybe? If people want further discussion, I'm not sure if folks are up to that suggestion. Either way, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with this, but if you're com, if the group's comfortable to. Wait a little bit, we'll call a special meeting.
Yeah, that would go around a little, um, I'll just speak for myself personally. I think, um. I'm okay making the decision tonight, I think, um, I think it's, you know, it's important and it's good that we're having this conversation to make sure that we. Are, you know, doing the job that we're supposed to be doing, so our, the oversight of boards and commissions, um. And I do think that, you know, I was concerned about the complaint that we received from a resident, um. But, uh, I also understand that, um, Jim has done a lot of work, even, you know, prior to this sort of working with the HGC. Um, and so I do, you know, put a fair amount of weight in, in sort of what he said, so I, I do appreciate that. So, um, I'm just glad that we're having the discussion that it should be had, um, but at least for, for, for myself, I'm okay with pursuing.
Uh, Councilor Stargardt?
Um. I would, as, I would agree with town manager. That the HGC meetings have been much improved, um, with. The new check, um, and, and just sort of a, maybe a reset of, of the HGC. It's, um, it's been much improved. So I, I definitely agree with that. Uh, I think. Our intent when we took up this matter was to. Address, um. Some concerning actions taken by the HGC, and if everything were to continue as it is right now. Um, I don't have any concerns about how the HGC is running right now. Um, I think the new leadership has been great. I think that, um, there's, there's been some extra attention. Uh, from the town staff that have gone into this commission. I don't know how much town staff time. Will be available to do that going forward, uh, but I, I certainly think that. The town staff, the town council, um. Saw an issue. On, and addressed the issue. The question, I think, before us today, or the, the discussion that we're having is. Are we satisfied with how things are right now, or do we want to end up with, uh, go in a different direction? Um. I might, uh. If it were up to me. I'd be okay keeping Miss Coleman Marziale on HGC. I think the HGC membership of five years is too long. And that maybe we could address this issue in a simpler way by changing the term of the. The length of the term of members on HGC, so that we, if we get into an issue in the future. We're not in a kind of five-year cycle, um, of a member that we might be struggling with. Um, maybe that's one way to go about it. But I, if it, you know, I would be in favor of keeping Miss Coleman Marziale on the HGC based on the current, the way things are going right now.
Thank you. Just a side note, um, Katie or Brian, is that, that's not defined by statute, is it, or is it?
Not by statute, by town ordinance, I heard, uh, town code, I believe.
Okay.
Which is certainly within our purview to change.
Okay, thank you. Um. I'll, I'll say my, by two cents, and we can go around again, um, if you like. So just looking at the stipulations, there were five of them. Um, so, uh, respondent shall resign as chair effective immediately. That has occurred. Um, respondent shall complete SHPO training. Um, we have written record that that has occurred. Um, from our building inspector, Mr. Paquelin. Um, respondent shall refuse herself from solar panel applications. Um, I believe that has also occurred. Um, her, Mr. Paquelin, uh, was, was not applicable.
They're having a bit, huh?
They're having a bit.
Yeah, and she got four more days, but. Um, anyways, uh, respondent shall refrain from ex parte communications, um. Best of our knowledge, again, from the letters that we have in our packet, that's occurred. Um, the respondent's conduct regarding the HGC shall be reevaluated in, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, that's where we are now. So I would also agree, I think that the stipulations have been met. Um, you know, that, so the earlier comments about bug rap, you know, they'll condone that, um, but I also. Don't feel that is within the, um. This, this agreement here. Um, so I think that I, I believe that she should, um, she should stay on the commission and. Um, as we discussed here, it sounds that like it's a much smoother operation now, um, and that's exciting to see. Um, I think it's in the best, best interest of the town to continue to move forward and, and, um. Let's stay as it is. Go around for another round. If anybody has anything else they'd like to add. So I mean, I'm open. Looking to just moving ahead as, as is. What I'm working at, um. All right, um. Old business, we don't have any items of old business. Um, so we go to the reporter, we tell them.
Great, thank you, Chair. Uh, tree lighting, uh, and parade, then tree lighting Saturday. Uh, you all have, uh, invitations. Um, we want to be there about five forty-five. Parade kicks off at six. It was a fun time. Many of us marched, uh, last year. Uh, if you want to wear something Christmasy, great. If not, that, that's fantastic. Uh, and then it's gonna, uh, blend right into the, um, Santa at the, um. Hickstern's museum, which they've done a great job already decorating it. Uh, we wanted to make it as ADA accessible as possible. We built. Uh, I, I want to thank, um, the, the fire department and Assistant Chief Carl Dogan for, uh, putting together a ramp. Uh, the ramp is good, it's not great. Um, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna stay, uh, and have this, this, we're trying this out this year, if it's, if it's, uh. Something that we like, we'll look to build a more permanent ramp, and I don't mean permanent ramp, but a ramp they can put there, um, and use more that is actually meets the ADA. Um, inclined as best we can, we'll look at doing that and then discuss that with, with the, uh, the commission. Uh, as, as counsel person you checked said earlier, um, and they were great. Um, the fire ban, obviously, we're discussing it. Uh, almost daily, and, um, there was talk of lifting it over the weekend. We wanted to mirror. What, uh, the other towns do and what the state does as well. And so, uh, the fire chief is coordinating with the other towns at this point. I, I believe it's anticipated that it will be lifted in the morning, and they'll do all the, the standard communications, uh, that they, they do, uh, which would include town. Um, when that fire ban is listed, but it was a coordination with the other towns. They, they all got it, I believe, at this afternoon, uh, different towns. And, and, uh, they wanted to check on, um, ordering areas, staffing and everything, and to make sure they were all in coordination when they did lift it. So that's where we are. Um, the parking garage, you're gonna see the, 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 the recs, the parking recs garage, uh, is gonna, you're gonna start to see some action. Uh, ju- just off to the left of Crandall's, you'll see, um, that, that, the DPW will be doing a lot of the demo themselves, as that's gonna start. Uh ju- just off to the left of Crandall's, you'll see um that the the D P W will be doing a lot of the demo themselves, as that's gonna start. Uh getting underway, uh while we're in the neighborhood, the ice rink will likely be put up. And ready in case there is a cold snap, although it doesn't really feel that way, um hopefully we'll have something, the rink will be ready. Uh if it doesn't, I'm gonna work with the Connecticut State Police on getting a contract in place um A S A P. Um so that we can move forward with the school security, it might not have the things that I wanna get and the M O U, I will continue. Uh that battle, um as there's just, there's just um so many, so many holes and more things have revealed themselves and and just felonies in our town, like I don't notification on, so many other things. Um that that there just needs to be professionalization of residency per contract, not just with Tom, but all the towns that have them. Uh and I know that's gonna be uh somewhat a heavy lift, so I'll get a contract in place so we can move forward with some of our security stuff. Uh and hopefully, you know, after after uh Thanksgiving, I'll be able to get get there, get into legal affairs at desk and get that done. There was, there was a power outage at um Parker Place. And um we were all in that night, we knew about it, there was a failure of the generator, our fire marshal was there and I believe we're, I'm pretty sure billing inspector went over there as well. We have a meeting coming up with Parker Place, they wanna put solar panels on 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 their uh roof. We have a hundred year lease with them, if it's not a hundred, it's eighty, I'm pretty sure it's a hundred. And uh we wanna be very careful what we do to the building there. They, you know. They've left a little bit to be desired as a tenant. In regards to complaints from the residents and other issues, uh so we wanna be very careful with them, but we were aware of the. Generator, our town staff was there, um and they assured us that it was fixed. And that it wasn't a complete outage as a result of that generator failure, but it was the majority of the outage. And it went longer than we had here when the, when this, the line went down, but the outage occurred, and the the line went down next to town hall, that that was the night. Uh so we were all here and we went over there, um that's all I have.
I've got a couple of questions, but this is me, other councillor, have any questions for Mr Foley?
Two things, Brian, um do you know, like, what is our responsibility with respect to Parker Place as far as? Like, is the generator something that the town is responsible for, or is that's, that's, so this is a failure of, like, not that, I mean, I, we should do as much as we can to ensure that something like this doesn't happen to our elderly residents, but. That's a failure of Parker, the 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 tenant and our place.
Yes.
The only thing I wanted to um.
But there's minimum requirements that they have to have and they have to meet, and we make sure they meet that.
Okay, thank you, um and I also just wanted to thank you um. The Chair and I met, you know, with you and um, you know, express sort of, I think we all agree about wanting to. Put school security uh as a top priority, so um thank you for doing what you can on your end to 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 help with that, um obviously our M O U, the state issue, should maybe be a. Totally separate issue, but whatever we can do on our end to help make our schools safer, I really appreciate that, I appreciate working with you.
I wanna say one more thing, if I can go back to my report, Chair. Uh I I did wanna thank uh Katie for her time as Chair. Uh and the work that she uh continues to do on the uh contaminated wells task force um with Eastern Highlands uh health districts. It's a, it's a, it's a thankless job, uh Katie, and and uh I enjoyed working with you, um I'm glad to have you back as my neighbor. But but thank you so much, uh. I'm glad to have you uh next to me, but I appreciate everything you've done. That's all, thanks.
Who else, oh, that's a big, somebody else? I have a couple of questions, so the uh Parks and Rec Garage under contract, so we're breaking ground soon. Do you think we can get a schedule for that?
We have your schedule.
Okay.
It is a crystal ball that will be deviated from greatly.
Yeah.
But it's a very rough schedule.
Okay, no, I understand, I, things change, but I definitely.
Yep.
Okay, um the other thing was with the fire study consultant for, I emailed about that and um. Mike Wolfson did provide a response, um I just wanna give you clarification of um what he said, if you can, can help me, this needs to go back, but. He said they would come back with initial analysis in January.
Yep.
Which tells me we're not close to getting a final report.
I don't know the answer to that.
We don't?
They'll be here, though.
Yeah.
We'll have access, as with, as with you, whether or not they're gonna come to a council meeting, I don't know, but I'll find that out, okay, Mike said they're gonna be here, okay.
I think it'd be good, um good to get some clarity upon that, you know, especially if it's. Correctly with the budget cycle, that would be, that would be ideal, but um I think uh it'd be good to get an update on it.
Yep.
I forget the gentleman's name, he did say that Brian just said we'd come back and get people's feedback, I assume that might be counsel too, so.
Oh, there'll definitely be a time when they'll come with counsel. I don't know, we just don't know if that's in January or not.
Oh, yeah, but it may kind of sound like we're gonna get something, some sort of draft soon.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a draft analysis, I can't exactly remember how he worded it, but.
Yeah, it sounds pretty common.
All right, um what is questions, we'll go to adoption of minutes. Uh we have the November twelfth regular meeting and also uh November twelfth uh special meeting minutes, which are from executive session. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes, so. Um any discussion on those meeting minutes? Yes, councillor, start me.
There's a slate, I don't really care, uh there, but this, it went to the newspaper article and everything, there's a slate typo in what. Is listed on the chairperson's report from that. My new job title is under secretary, not under the secretary.
I did notice it in the article.
It's a weird job title, so I, I'm sorry, Lisa.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay, so I guess if we could just change that.
I thought you were gonna say it's a secretary.
No, 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 no. There you go. Yeah, so if we could change that, make that correction from under the secretary to under secretary, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, but I don't miss other robust rules here.
All of us.
And um. We had it over here, is it Jen?
For what?
You you second the motion, are you okay with the?
Oh, I was giving it to Colleen, but. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
We've gone off the rails.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you okay, Colleen?
I am.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem, um that, uh all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
I.
I. It's like that's unanimous, so that brings us to correspondence to councillor.
Yeah, I don't think I have one, but we did get one from like, let me go back. We all got it, and I think Brian responded too, we got one from a student at UConn, she's trying.
Yep.
Or something, have you been able to communicate with her? I think that's the only one I. We call any other ones, I don't have it in my present folder.
You listen quiet?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, please me to my chairperson to court, you have a. Um so it's been two weeks since I've been elected chair with Chris as a vice chair, and I just wanna thank all the town staff for making this a very easy transition. To the new role, and I also wanted to thank uh Chair Star Garder for um all her her work as the chair for me. I would think we're in a good place to govern uh very effectively, cooperatively throughout the remainder of the term. Um even when um we have disagreements which will inevitably arise, it's just part of our process, but I think we're in a good place. Already had some very productive conversations with stakeholders, caucus and council as a whole. And the the town staff on important issues and items that I see forward. Couple of big priorities that I wanna work on this term, some of which we've already talked about tonight, getting a resident trooper contract in place. Enacting a cannabis sales tax revenue policy or ordinance. Revisiting uh the debt plan for the recently approved pavement plan and also kicking off work at stations one forty and four four. Obviously, we've got a lot to go, things, you know. Weeks, um but I'm hoping that we can work up on these issues and all the other important issues together. And there's some good news. Over the next year, I wanna make fiscal responsibility and public safety uh key focuses, areas, be it fire department or. As aforementioned, resident trooper and civil resource officer positions may be concerned. Must be fiscally responsible, we must have a safe place to live and work, those are really um key, key elements and foundational elements, having a good, strong community. Our town staff does a wonderful job working towards both of these ends, um but there's always room for improvement and more problems to be solved that I look forward to to tackling with everybody. And of course, I think we also need to be uh focused on um those issues that have been uh plaguing the residents for a while. Particularly contaminated wells issues and the completion of a sidewalk. That I'm looking forward very working, uh looking forward to working with this this council, um I wanna wish all of our residents a very happy Thanksgiving. Please go see the tree lighting if you can, fortunately I will not be able to, but please go and enjoy, um I hope that all those who are traveling are safe. Right, that, um we need to communications and petitions from council persons.
When I made sure that Chris Moran fifteen hundred candy came for Saturday.
Now I just have to throw bigger.
No, but seriously, we got like fifteen hundred, we burn out.
I don't get it about the Board of Ed building.
Right.
What's that?
Nothing.
I'll get a few more steps.
But no, I was gonna say, if we do have any extra, I was wondering if we could just give them over to um. Santa Glen over there and give them up to kids if we have extra or something like that, but hot cocoa, we've been. And I'm not sure, cause I stepped up to use the restroom, um we the cross America is December fourteenth. I asked Jacob and Chris Moran if we could donate a week again, because we did last year, so they agreed that was kind of seventeen dollars. It's a good cause, and I think, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and.
One more note, just if I may, cause I think it's good to attend that ceremony they do, I think it's on the fourteenth.
Yeah, the summer fourteen, Valley Deep.
Yes, um Baxter Road, I think that is.
We're well into the planning process for that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Uh I just wanna echo Brian, thank councillor Star Garder for. All of her time as chair, being chair is definitely not um always easy, um and I don't, and neither position. Um and I also wanna thank you, uh the contaminated well issue is obviously incredibly complicated. Issue both from the standpoint of uh. Resolving the problem, but also as far as, you know, communicating with residents, we have sort of like. Legal limitations based on what we're, you know, allowed to do, and you've put in a a lot of time into that task force, and I uh really appreciate all the time they dedicated to that. The only other thing I wanted to mention um is, obviously, I think, as I mentioned with the delegation was here, we definitely have an education funding. Problem, um and so certainly I think that's something that the council needs to uh just have at the forefront of our mind, um as we move into the budget season.
I, I guess I just wanna, I think, uh Jacob and Chris for taking over so wonderfully, uh much appreciated. By times, a little bit crazy right now, um. I would uh, I would agree with the uh the sentiments from the legislative delegation. That education funding is a linchpin type issue. That really impacts our town. And. I, I recently had a conversation with one of my children about. What are they gonna do about studying foreign language in high school, and how is that gonna impact their college? And it, it brings up the, it brings up a a number of. Related topics regarding what we as a town are investing in our children and how we're, not just our children, but how we're supporting the family, so. Approximately two thirds of the households in town are family household, according to the Zets Bureau. And the family uh unit is complicated, right? But um impacts to one person in a family tends to impact the whole family. So, for example, if my child doesn't get the required number of foreign language credits in high school. That means that if my child wants to go to college, that then. Uh my household has to pay for my child to take a foreign language class in college as opposed to. Maybe a different credit class that could get them closer to graduation uh faster and could. Reduce the cost to my household in terms of college costs, that's just one example. I think it's important for us to remember as we are. Working to keep our financial house in order, that the cost of education is going up. The requirements for our education system are increasing, um and we're not getting. The corresponding funding to match those. Requirements. And we live in a town that some would uh characterize as a bedroom community, um we have a lot of families in this town. We have a lot of uh families that moved into town for the education system, we have a lot of families who. Have children in the school or have children just coming out of school and. We're going to see with the rebau that is, report that is coming up. I would guess that our property values have increased. But. I believe that our property values are very closely tied to the quality of education we're providing, and we're starting to see a negative impact. In the quality of education through test scores, through student ratios. Um and through a lot of other metrics, it's very concerning, um so while I. Appreciate the focus that our chairperson uh just talked about in terms of. Fiscal accountability. The corresponding consideration is need. And what we as a town, what we as a community are willing to do to support our kids. These two things are not mutually exclusive, uh you can have both. It's, finding the balance is very difficult, but it it is there, um and I would encourage us to. Look for that balance. Uh and and really kind of buckle down and strive towards finding that balance, because it's important for. More than twenty five hundred, you know, two, twenty five hundred or so kids that are in our school system, three quarters of the households that are family households. Young kids, old kids, and uh lots and lots of people here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me revisit discussing one discussion. That was a joke, guys. I, I, I can't follow that up, I've got nothing.
Good, um that brings us to item fifteen, public listed participation. On any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit, so uh so go to the room first, George.
Sure. I was gonna be quiet, but. Joyful rich fish game mode, talent. Um, I would like to point out the other aspect, we don't seem to take into account enough about those of us that are on Fix It Coast. And my numbers, as I understand them, is there's only twenty-one hundred students in Talon. And with that being said, even if every family only had one child, that still only be forty-two hundred parents. So if you add them with the kids, we still don't come up with fifty percent of the population. So, given that many families also probably have more than one child, you've got to look at it from the standpoint that the majority of people in Talon do not have children at school. So, that being said, if we want to do best by our children, then we've got to find out somewhere else to cut. So, I don't explain, I understand exactly where that can come from, but we have to be very aware of our taxes going forward, because a lot of us are really in, in deep doo-doo and I believe you want to raise that. And given our new, uh,
Make it sound.
Our new, uh, administration coming in, and his idea of cutting the Department of Education and all these other things, I think we're gonna be in a real world of not good. So, just be, you know, just as my point.
Thank you. Anyone online? Uh, Jody Coleman Marzialo?
Thank you, Jody Coleman Marzialo, seventy-nine Talon Green. I just wanted to say thank you, I have met all the stipulations, um, I did have my meetings with Jim Paquin, and thank you very much for letting me, um, I assume that's what I'm allowed to do, continue my term, which, um, expires in twenty-twenty-seven, as you know, I have been a huge advocate of historic preservation and, um, the character of our historic district. I wanted to say that recently we met at the, uh, I had a meeting and Tanya Kelly attended as well as Celeste Seneschell, representing the Historical Society with the State Historic Preservation Office, and they're trying to find new funding to support some grants and had a, um, Connecticut statewide meeting where over sixty-one participants were there, so it was really educational and very helpful, hopefully we'll get some additional funding coming our way, uh, which would be very helpful to our town. And I was just curious if there was any kind of a timeframe for when the three historic-style additional streetlights will be installed. Um, I understand that they're approved and that they're gonna be moving forward, but I was wondering if there was some kind of timeframe at all for that installation. And I wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Brian, did you ever answer that off the top of your head?
It's soon, okay.
Before, it's on a to-do list.
Yep.
Government's in. Right, well, I think you kind of hundred percent non-staff audience participation today, so, good, um, a staff that wants the same thing. I don't think he does, so, that, um, is there any objection to adjournment? Not objection, I were adjourned at nineteen P M.